At this time, I'd like to call the Special Village Board Meeting to order. Let the record reflect it, it's Tuesday, July 20th, 2021, at 7:11 PM. The Village Board will be, will like to welcome everyone to the Special Village Board Meeting at Station 46. Please keep in mind that this is a public safety facility and any time an emergency can come up, the alarm will sound and the meeting will pause while fire department personnel respond to the emergency. The meeting is being conducted pursuant to Governor Pritzker's Disaster Proclamation and Public Act 101-0640, which amends requirements of the Open Meetings Act due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Although remote attendance is an option for board members, all are present, thus we do not need to confirm the audio other than Trustee Mueller, who said he will not be phoning in. All the materials for this meeting are available on the Village website and we recommend the members of the public follow the agenda as posted. After members have spoken, I will afford public comment as follow. Once I, the Chair, have a list of all public commenters, I will call on each person present at the meeting and afford them three minutes for their comment. Further time, up to an additional three minutes, may be granted by a motion of the Village Board. The public was also provided the opportunity to submit a request until noon today by email to the clerksoffice@tinleypark.org or by placing their written request in the dropbox at Village Hall to participate publicly via a live telephone call at the relevant portion of the public meeting. The public was also provided the opportunity to submit written comments until noon today by emailing their public comments to the clerksoffice@tinleypark.org or by placing their written comments in the dropbox at the Village Hall. Written comments will not be read aloud. And finally, each vote will be taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Again, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and law.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Roll call to order, Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Brennan.
Present.
Trustee Galante.
Here.
Trustee Mahoney.
Present.
Trustee Mueller is absent. Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
President Glotz.
Present, thank you. Item number one, like to ask for a motion to consider approval of today's agenda.
So moved.
I have a second.
I will second.
Thank you.
Roll call for item number one, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante. Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item number two, I'd like to ask for a motion to consider approval of the minutes of the Special Village Board Meeting held on June 29th, 2021.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Anyone from the public here to address the board?
Roll call for item number two, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante. Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item number three, consider proclaiming Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, as the 38th Annual National Night Out in the Village of Tinley Park. The National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie. This is the 38th year the Village of Tinley Park has participated in this national event. Consider proclaiming Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, as the 38th Annual National Night Out in the Village of Tinley Park. Dinah, do you care to step up?
Good eve, good evening. I'm Dinah Neves from Tinley Park Police and I want to invite everyone to our National Night Out. It's going to be a really nice event. We have representatives from the Police Department, Fire Department, Pyrimatics, Public Work Employees, Emergency Management, 911, Cook and Will County Sheriff's Police, the DEA, Homeland Security, Illinois State Police, Metro Police, representatives from local organizations and businesses. And weather permitting, a helicopter will be landing. Entertainment includes David Fleming, who is the stilts walker, and he will be making balloons, doing magic, juggling show, and he'll meet and greet people on his stilts. And then we do have a DJ, Jackie McDonald, for our listening pleasure. So it is a really awesome opportunity to come and visit and see all the vehicles. Some communities do touch a truck. This is kind of like a touch of truck, but with more of the law enforcement and the public safety. So it is on Tuesday, August 3rd, from 6 o'clock till 9 o'clock. And in addition, we have all the, the community organizations and some churches and businesses that will also be there and have all their tables in the, basically in the parking lot of Freedom Park. So we're hoping for great weather, just like the Black Party had, and it's just going to be a really great event. So everyone is invited. Thank you.
If I could add to that, Dinah's been spearheading this for the Village for several years and it has won national awards for at least the last 20, maybe more. So she does an excellent job. It's really well put together and everyone should come out and enjoy it.
Thank you very much. Hope to see everyone. It is a board meeting night, but maybe you can come before the board meeting. Thank you very, very much.
That's what I said at the end. Nobody bothers me.
Item number four, received presentation of the Tinley Park Business Spotlight by President Glotz and Clerk Theryan. Clerk Theryan, do you want to take Dunkin' Donuts?
I'd like to introduce our presenters tonight, Rich and Teresa Momsen from Dunkin' Donuts. They're joint, they're joint owners of the location at 19420 South Harlem and 7935 171st Street. They've been invested in Tinley Park since 2008 and currently employ between 50 and 60 employees between both of their locations. Please join me in welcoming Rich and Teresa Momsen.
In 2008, my wife and I and my two daughters Karen and Jennifer opened up our first Dunkin' Donuts location. And it was on 171st and 80th Avenue. From there, we now have seven locations. The location over at 171st currently doesn't have a drive-through. We knew that going into it was going to be a challenge to get customers to continue to come to our location without the drive-through and the convenience. So we decided at that point in time to focus on two things, which was customer service, which obviously is the most important thing, but also being involved in the communities that we're in. We actually started about 2010 with a knock on the door, 2 o'clock in the morning, from Officer Bill Devine, Tinley Park Police Department, when he invited us to be part of the Cop on the Roof program, which is Dunkin', Donuts, Baskin Robbins, Foundation-led fundraiser for Special Olympics. From there, it kind of grew into basically involvement in every, every aspect of what our employees were into and that we felt was worthy for us to get involved with. We've done Shake the Cans, we've done Things for Paws, we've done things for a number of organizations, but the big one was obviously the Cop on the Roof program. In about the last eight to 10 years, we've raised in that location over $100,000 for Special Olympics. Our location in Tinley on 171st has raised, has been the second, third, or fourth highest producer for the Special Olympics in that particular program in the state. So obviously, it's, it's customer-based and it's very well attended. We've done other things that have gone over quite as well, too. Our biggest, like I said, our biggest thing is to be involved in the community. The vast majority of our current employees and former employees have been residents at Tinley Park. We like to stay local and try and, and keep with the community theme for everything that we do. So like I said, we've been about for 13 years now. All of the fundraisers that we've done has actually led us to, in 2016, to be a regional winner for Dunkin' Donuts for philanthropic endeavors. And in 2018, we were actually national winners of the Dunkin' Donuts philanthropic organization that we're all involved with. So we're kind of proud of that. Like I said, we like to be involved with the community and everything that we do. I'd like to thank you all for at least listening to what we have to say and I appreciate the invitation to come out to talk.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you, Rich. And I just, I want to thank you, too, for the investment you're putting in the community to move into the outlot. It's going to be a big investment for you for a drive-through and I appreciate you staying in Tinley.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Item number five, consider appointing Marie Griscaouillac to the position of Police Clerk Matron. Marie started at the Police Department as a part-time clerk matron in May of 2018 and quickly picked up on the multiple tasks required of the various police administrative shifts. She continued to excel at her duties and in October of 2020, accepted increased hours to provide for staff coverage. Marie continues to be an asset to the Police Department and will be an outs, will be outstanding in filling the full-time opening of the Police Clerk Matron. Marie is a longtime Tinley Park resident, attended Andrew High School, and after graduation, Marie attended post-secondary education locally, obtaining a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Like to ask for a motion to consider appointing Marie to the position of Police Clerk Matron effective July 21st, 2021.
I will make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call for.
Marie, would you like to come up and say a couple of words?
Hi. I just wanted to take this chance to say thank you to everyone and to meet all of you officially and to say that I look really forward to this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, we had a retirement, a resignation, and an injury and we were really short-staffed. We went to everybody in the, all the clerks. Marie stepped up. She's worked every hour we've asked of her. She's learned every job that's there. She was the obvious choice for this position and she's going to do really well in it. So thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Marie. Congratulations. Item number six, consider appointing Barb Balserzak to the position of Building Permit Technician. Barb started in the Community Development in February of 2015 as Clerk One. Due to COVID reductions, her position became part-time in 2020. Barb is a team player who is committed to providing a high level of customer service to every resident, contractor, and business owner interacting with the Community Development Department. She is an asset to the department and is recommended for promotion to the full-time position of Building Permit Technician. Consider appointing Barb Balserzak to the position of Building Permit Technician effective July 21st, 2021. Kimberly, would you like to say a couple of words for her?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I, I'm excited to see Barb come back to the team full-time. She's been extremely helpful and through all the transition that our department has gone through, she has been nothing but stellar. Her positive attitude, her, her team-like attitude as well has just been excellent and I couldn't be happier to have her at a Building Permit Tech and, and full-time with us. So thank you very much for allowing her to be a part of the team.
Thank you, Kimberly. Then, Madam Clerk, can you roll back to item five and call the roll?
Roll call for item five, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante. Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Item six. Please call the roll.
All right, understood. Roll call for item six, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Let's just start from the top. So, we didn't get a motion for six? No, let's just start from the top. Let's get a motion and second and then call the roll. Back to item six, my apologies. Do we have a motion to appoint Barb Balserzak?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call for item six, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item seven, consider appointing Eileen Schultz to the position of Assistant Treasurer. Eileen is dedicated over 24 years to the Village and is an integral part of the Finance Department. Her knowledge of operations and institutional knowledge is second to none. Eileen quarterbacks the audit and budget process while tackling day-to-day issues that arise in many areas of Village business. She is always willing to put in the time to complete tasks and ensure they are correct. Eileen is a dedicated employee willing to lead, assist, contribute, and help whenever asked. She is an exceptional problem solver, project manager, and even better, team member, and gives the Village her best every day. Eileen is recommended for the promotion to the Assistant Treasurer position. Consider appointing Eileen Schultz to the position of Assistant Treasurer effective July 21st, 2021. Eileen's not here, is she?
Yes.
You come up, Eileen? Thank you.
I'd like to just say thank you for the opportunity for all of you and especially Andrew to, to be able to do this. I've dedicated 24 years and I'll continue to do that, so thank you.
It's our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion for item seven.
I will make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call for item seven, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante. Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number eight, like the board to consider appointing Amy Lutzen to the position of Senior Accountant. Amy has been with the Village for about two and a half years. She brought over 20 years of private sector experience as an Assistant Controller. Amy assists in financial reporting, accounting functions, project management, and other duties as assigned. She is an excellent Finance Department team member and helps make Tinley Park a better place. Amy is recommended for promotion to the position of Senior Accountant. I'd like to ask the board to please consider appointing Amy Lutzen to the position of Senior Accountant effective July 21st, 2021. Mr. Mayor, before you call for the motion, Trustee Brennan.
Yeah, 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 Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just, just make a quick disclosure. This would be for the next two items, for eight and nine. I would just like to state for the record that I'll be abstaining from these votes as the two candidates are clients of mine and State Farm. I consulted with the Village Attorney and he's advised that out of abundance of caution and Village rules, that, that I abstain from the next two to avoid the appearance of impropriety. So I, I think both the candidates are very deserving of the opportunity and I just want to put that out there, make sure, have it all on record due to some of the rules that we have to, we have to follow. So thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Amy, I know you're trying to hide back there. Would you mind coming up and saying a couple of words?
I just wanted to say thank you for the recognition and I wanted to say how grateful I am to work with such talented and hard-working folks. I enjoy coming in every day to see them.
Thank you, Amy. Can I have a motion, please, to appoint Amy?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
I will second.
Thank you.
Roll call for item eight, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Abstain.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item number nine, like to ask the board to please consider appointing Leisha Drew Cooper to the position of Senior Accountant. Leisha has been with the Village just over two years and brought with her a breadth of knowledge from public sector, accounting, and banking industry and municipal government experience. She takes pride in her work and is a true professional and a pleasure to work with. Leisha works on many financial reporting, manages projects in conjunction with other departments, and assists in other department initiatives as requested. The Village of Tinley Park Finance Department is lucky to have such a great team member. Leisha is recommended for promotion to the position of Senior Accountant. Please consider appointing Leisha Drew Cooper to the position of Senior Accountant effective July 21st, 2021. Leisha, would you like to say a couple of words?
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. It's been my pleasure to work here for the last two years. I work with a really outstanding group of people in the Finance Department that make the Village a really wonderful place to work. So I appreciate the recognition and thank you very much.
Thank you. Before I ask for the motion, again, I just want to, for the record, let it reflect that Trustee Bill Brennan has recused himself from this vote. Do I have a motion to appoint Leisha Drew Cooper?
I will make the motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Roll call for item nine, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Abstain.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item number 10, please consider appointing Christopher Frankenfield to the position of Accountant Two. Chris has been with the Village just over three and a half years and he is a significant part of the Village's customer service, overseeing day-to-day operations at the front counter and assisting financial reporting functions. Chris is a great team member, willing to take on all tasks thrown his way, and he does a great job for the residents of Tinley Park. He has demonstrated his abilities and is recommended for promotion to Accountant Two. Please consider appointing Christopher Frankenfield to the position of Accountant Two effective July 21st, 2021. Chris, would you like to say anything?
I just want to say I appreciate my hard work as being recognized and I'm grateful for this opportunity and look forward to continuing working with the Village. Thank you for all your approval.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Great. Great job, Chris, on that video you made for the Village stickers, too. Do we have a motion to appoint Christopher Frankenfield?
I will make the motion.
I'll second that motion.
For item 10, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item number 11, even though he doesn't like being in the public, I asked to put this item on there to acknowledge Andrew Brown on his appointment to the Village Treasurer. Last board meeting, it was all about Brad Bettenhausen and as happy as you were to kind of slip through, I wanted to make sure you got your, your picture from Donna. The Mayor Clerk and the Board of Trustees would like to recognize Andrew Brown on his recent appointment to Village Treasurer. No action is required, but Andrew, if you'd like to say a couple of words?
Well, thank goodness my voice projects because we're going to have to get.
You raised the mic.
Yeah, for, for the fire department here in, in the next budget cycle. Just no echo. I, you know, I, I appreciate the recognition, but I, I'm, you know, I'm glad I'm, I have a floor now just to really recognize the promotions of my staff. No leader in any organization, big or small, can be successful without a great team. And the promotions tonight are a tremendous reflection of, of who I have behind me and really what makes the Finance Department run. I get pulled in a lot of different directions and work with a lot of the folks up here regularly and that doesn't give me time to do the things, the day-to-day tasks and such. And without a team like that, I, I wouldn't be successful. So really, our, our group is awesome. It's the best team I've worked with in, in any community from a finance perspective and they're, they are, they're true professionals and they're great people and, and they make it easy to come to work every day and get things done. So really, I, I appreciate the recognition, but I can't steal the thunder from them tonight. They, they really deserve all the credit at this point, so thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Item number 13, like to ask the board to consider removal of Michael Cotrano as a member and chair of the Senior Service Commission and as a member of the Marketing Commission. Is there such a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any, any discussion from the board? So this is to consider removal of Michael Cotrano as a member and chair of the Senior Service Commission as a member of the Marketing Commission. Anyone from the public here to comment? Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
Roll call for item 13, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thanks. Need more light in here? Item number 12, consider the following commission appointment for fiscal year 2022. Like to ask for a motion to consider appointing Angela Gatto as Commissioner to the Plan Commission for fiscal year 2022. Do I have a, a motion?
So moved.
Second? Anyone from the board here to comment? Anyone from the public?
Roll, roll call for item 12, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item 14, consider the following Board Commission liaison appointments for fiscal year 2022. The commission appointments are, or liaison appointments are listed below. Any questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call for item 14, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 15, a consent agenda. May I have a motion to consider approval of the consent agenda items? Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The consent agenda items have been publicly posted and available for review on the agenda for this meeting. Would anyone from the board like any of these items removed from the consent agenda? Anyone from the public here to comment? Anyone from the public here to comment?
Roll call for item 15, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante. Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item number 16.
Yeah, missed, yeah, missed, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this item.
Let's wait for the train. Unless you speak loud, so the camera picks it up.
Sure. I'd just like to make a motion to postpone, postpone item number 16 to the next meeting.
Any questions from the board? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions from the board?
Is there any, is there any reason why we're?
I just want to postpone, this is an item that Trustee Mueller wanted to weigh in on and I wanted to make sure he had his chance to, to do that, so.
Any other questions from the board?
Motion to postpone for item number 16, Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney. Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 17. Like to ask for a motion to consider adopting Resolution 2021-R-064, approving a Cook County Class 8 request for Mira Real Estate property located at 6775 Prospery Drive. Oh, I'm sorry. Item 17 is yours, Trustee Galante.
Do you want me to read that? I'd like to ask for a motion to consider adopting Resolution 2021-R-064, approving the Cook County Class 8 request for Mira Real Estate property located at 6775 Prosperous Drive.
I'll second that.
We need a mo-, hold on. We need a motion.
Some moved.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead, Diane.
This resolution provides support for the Cook County Class 8 incentive for Mira Real Estate LLC, who recently purchased this property. The applicant proposes to invest $6 million in substantial improvements to the property in order to reoccupy the building and has a sta-, and has stated that the Class 8 incentive is necessary to make this project feasible. The Economic and Commercial Commission reviewed this application at its July 12th meeting and voted seven to zero to recommend the approval of the Class 8 reclassification. This item was discussed at the Committee of the Whole prior to this meeting, and it's eligible for adoption.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public on item 17?
Roll call for item 17. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 18.
Thanks. I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting Resolution 2021-R-0665, approving a Cook County Class 8 re-, request for Imagine Aspen LLC for property located at 6851 West 167th Street.
I'll second it.
Thank you. The resolution provides support for the Cook County Class 8 incentive to Imagine Aspen LLC, who has, who's the contract purchaser of the property. The appr- applicant, applicant plans to invest $400,000 into the building to convert it into a 23-suite style salon facility, install the sprinkler system, and improve the landscape around the building. The project will result, result in an increase of 27 jobs when fully operational. The Economic Commercial Commission reviewed this application at its July 12th, 2021 meeting and voted seven to zero to recommend it, the Class 8, uh, the Class 8 request. This item was discussed at the Committee of the Whole prior to this meeting, and it's eligible for adoption.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Roll call for item number 18. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting Resolution 2021-R-067, approving an extension to the contract for Kurt's Ambulance Service for Emergency Medical Services.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Uh, staff has completed its review of its past three years of service with Kurt's AMR Ambulance, and they have satisfactorily met the requirements of both program service and cost options. Based on the original contract, there is an option of two, two-year contract extensions. It is, the recommended that the village combine both extensions to extend four years for maximum cost and service efficiencies. Staff is requesting the approval of the contract extension for a not-to-exceed amount of $2 million, $174,677.99. This was discussed at the Committee of the Whole meeting on June 29th, 2021, and recommended for approval. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Roll call for item number 19. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 20.
I'd like to make a motion to consider waiving the first reading and adopt the Resolution 2021-R-068, authorizing the exec-, execution of the tax increment financing redevelopment agreement with, in the 159th and Harlem TIF district between the Village of Tinley Park and 163rd and Harlem LLC for property at 16300 South Harlem Avenue, Pete's Fresh Market.
I will second that.
Thank you. Uh, 163rd and Harlem LLC is requesting the village provide economic assistance to make the improvements at their shopping center. The proposed incentive consists of sharing a maximum of 5.5 million in TIF increment revenue produced by the state alone. The site alone, sorry. The village proposes to share 80% of the TIF increment produced for a maximum of 10 years to reimburse the eligible costs and conditions outlined in the, uh, draft agreement. The Economic and Commercial Commission reviewed this incentive request on July 12th, 2021, and was, voted seven to zero to recommend the approval. This item was discussed at the Committee of the Whole prior to this meeting. If first reading is waived, the resolution is eligible for adoption.
Any questions from the board?
It's part of the motion, isn't it?
So the, the motion to waive is, uh, it went through the ECC and was ordered out at seven to zero, uh, which allows us to waive the first reading. Is there a motion to waive the first reading?
I'll make the motion to waive the first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to waive first reading for item number 20. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading carries. Now for item number 20. Are there any questions for the petitioner, for you, Jim? Anyone from the public here to comment?
Roll call for item 20. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante. Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Item number 21.
I'd like to make a motion to consider waiving first reading and adopt the ordinance 2021-0-050, granting a special use for the substantial deviation from the Park Place Planned Unit Development, Pete's Fresh Market.
I'll second it.
The petitioner for Pete's Fresh Market is requesting approval for the site proposed architectural plan, for the site, for the proposed site architectural plans and substantial deviation from the Park Place Planned Unit redevelopment for their 24.2 acre property located at 16300 Harlem Avenue. The proposed development is Phase 2 of a three-phase project. Phase 2 includes the construction of the Pete's Fresh Market store and attached inline retail tenant space north of the grocery store, and an expansion of the warehouse. The Plan Commission held the meeting, held their, um, public hearing on June 17th, 2021, and voted five to zero to recommend approval for the special use for the substantial deviation in accordance with the plan submitted and adopted findings of fact as proposed by the village staff on June 17th, 2021. Staff report. The first reading is, if the first reading is waived, this ordinance is eligible for adoption.
So the Plan Commission held the public hearing and voted unanimously, which allows the board to waive first reading if they choose. Is there a motion to waive first reading?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to waive first reading. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
The waive of first reading carries. Is there any questions for item number 21 for the petitioner? Anyone from the public care to comment?
Roll call for item 21. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item number 22.
Yes, I'd like to have the board consider again the, um, adopting Resolution 2021-R-060, authorizing the village manager to contract for the purchase of electricity from the electrical aggregation program.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill.
The village's electric aggregation program contract is expiring in October. The resolution authorizes the village manager to contract for the purpose, purchase of electricity and for the company that has been determined by the village board at the Committee of the Whole meeting prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Uh, this is for record. So to say, um, Mr. Kindred, on the board's consideration of, uh, the whole, uh, what did go into, um,
Yeah, it was illegal.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions? Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Roll call for item 22. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante. Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Just, uh, very quickly, Mayor Glantz, just, um, congratulations to all the employees, uh, well-deserved employees appointed tonight. But, uh, also, and I'm sure the trustees will echo to thank the great job, marketing, uh, police, Public Works, and all, all the staff that were involved in the block party over the weekend. Uh, nice to have a, a big event back. That's it.
Anybody else? You don't want to comment on how successful it was?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do have one. I just want to know, we haven't had a, I think, disclosure in quite a while. I know we have some new, uh, board members, uh, so I just want to imagine us being, uh, Brennan for, uh, publicly disclosing that, and that's, you know, kind of mentioned this when we get on this. That's what the ethics ordinance is about. It's about, um, the public.
Sorry. That, that's what the ethics ordinance is about. It's about, you know, we're going to have these things come up, and it's about recognizing them, disclosing, publicly disclosing them, and abstaining. So, you know, in a town such as Tinley Park where, you know, you know your neighbors and you converse with them a lot, this is going to happen. So, um, this is, um, I commend Trustee Brennan, and for any of the new trustees, that's, you know, that's exactly how it's supposed to go, uh, in the future. So, just want to make that point.
Thank you. Item 24. Any comments from the board?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say thanks to all the village staff for making this happen tonight. This kind of all came about where, um, me and Trustee Mueller were talking about, you know, it was kind of a shame that we could never go to cruise nights and, you know, enjoy some of the festivities. So we thought this would be a good way to, to kind of bring, bring the board meeting to the, to the community and kind of get it out and, uh, see if we can attract a few more, um, you know, members of the public, just to see if, uh, you know, to see if we can get any more, you know, people to come out, more involvement, more engagement. So I want to say thanks to marketing, thanks to Public Works, thanks to Dave and, uh, all his staff for, for putting all this together. I, uh, you know, there, there was, uh, I think only one snafu with the, with the electric, but it was, uh, um, you know, a, a very, I thought, well put together, and I think, uh, staff did a great job with this. So thanks so much for, uh, for making it happen, and, uh, I know, it's like I said, we've been talking about it for a while, so, um, you know, I thought it was, uh, pretty, pretty darn good. So, thanks so much.
No, I, I agree, uh, Trustee Brennan, and I think it's, it's good for the board to do this. Laura was also heavily involved, and, but yeah, I think, uh, it was a good, uh, good idea. Thank you.
For the record, Laura's always involved in something and helping us.
Yeah. Yes, excuse me, Laura, sorry.
Laura's the one always behind the curtain. And, um, I just want to add, you know, kind of piggyback off of what Andrew said. All these appointments, it is nice promoting from within. Um, we do have some great employees at the village at Tinley Park. And, um, Dave, you know, Brad, and Pat, and everyone involved in this. I want to thank you guys for, uh, working through for these appointments for the, uh, village. Thank you. Anyone else from the board care to comment?
I have a couple of comments. Um, one, I just want to say thank you to every, all those, everybody who was involved in the weekend's, um, block party. It was a blast. It's always a blast. It's probably the, one of the best events, I think, in the entire area. So, thank you. I know that's a huge amount of work for everybody involved. And then I, I wanted to, just to bring up something that Bill had talked about. Um, you know, when we were doing all these projects, I think I asked about this when I first got on. Do we have a operational cost of, you know, we're going to be bringing in this whole big new grocery store? How many more police are we going to need? What about our, our Public Works? What else are they going to need? Do we ever consider putting that into it so you have that overhead cost? What's the additional cost because of this project? We have this, you know, beautiful apartments there coming in and all the additional people. What is that going to be to the staff so we don't have to wait till we're shorthanded to know that cost, uh, to know it upfront? We can see our incentives, how much we're going to make, but what is it going to cost us to bring them in? Because we're going to need three more policemen. We're going to need a few more, you know, Public Works people to do the work here. Um, is, you know, one of, one of my questions, and then, um, just to piggyback off of, you know, with, uh, I've had a couple people ask me about the process of, um, when permits come in. Is there a system that get logged, um, so that we know that this one came in on the first? That's going to be the, you know, we're going to do them in order as much as we can, as long as the paperwork's there, so that there's no question if they're being, you know, how they're being held up. And is there a timeline? What is the expectations if somebody puts in a permit to, before they have to start calling, um, you know, trustees to find out why their permit hasn't been done? What is, uh, the timeline? What's expected?
Dave, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let, uh, I'll answer the first question. So I think it's important to remember at 159th and Harlem, um, you know, we're, we're dealing with a center where, um, there, there's businesses been there. As, as we know, that center was, um, up until a few years ago, already had a large business there. So it's not something that we anticipate that this is going to be adding staffing, but it's important to remember the reason why we're really aggressively attracting businesses like that is the, the sales tax that they generate. And that sales tax will make a, a significant effect on our, our village, village budget. And again, it's, you know, Public Works, this isn't really a Public Works because this is private property. Police and Fire already have calls out there. Um, when the old Kmart was there, they, they had calls. So we don't really see that as something that's going to be affecting staffing. But I'll let Kimberly answer the second question.
In regards to the system, we have, um, when permits come in that are completed, our goal is by the end of the day to have all permits that were completed that day input in the system so that they can be routed as they need to be routed. Right now, we're in a hybrid scenario where we are trying to accept applications online, but many of the times those applications aren't completed. So even though you're communicating with staff, it's not in the system yet until everything is completed because we can't route things for review that aren't complete. So therefore, it's associated with the building permit number, and it goes through the process of review. Once review's been completed, we check for contractors, which there can be back and forth with contractors not being registered. Ultimately, when that part has been completed, we follow up the, with the contractor, resident, or business that their permit is ready for pickup. We do all the invoicing and we get everything ready to go, and that's that process. Uh, we have, um, basically COVID, um, was not the expectation that we thought would happen with the building permits. We actually, I think, last, my month report, we were double the permits, um, that we were the year prior. So we do have a volume issue right now, um, and I've lost some staff. So we are tackling those as we can. Uh, we are looking at ways to, um, expedite permits. One step we took is particularly for fence permits. We reduced that review time to only one individual that needs to review those, and they can take those permits from beginning to end through the entire process. So, um, I'm happy to say that at least fence permits are getting out within a couple of days of a completed application being submitted. We recognize that's a, uh, usually a homeowner permit, and we want to, uh, work with those. So, um, I hope that explains a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, currently, we don't have a way for residents or business owners, whoever's doing, uh, putting it in, the requister, to look, right? They have to call.
Right. Our goal in the future, as I see the department, is I'd like for people to use an online portal where they can just type in their permit number and see the status of where it's at. If it's in review, if it's pending contractors, that is the ultimate goal that I'd like to, to get to. But sometimes, you know, we are reacting to businesses or residents calling us saying, hey, I, I'm getting scheduled for my, you know, permit, you know, and we do, we do try to, uh, accommodate people that are doing things on their own, or they have contractors coming out, so. But right now, it's But right now, it's a high volume and a lot of work.
Okay. But we kind of track who's coming in, so we're not, you know.
Yep.
Not to encourage the person that's going to keep calling you to get ahead of the game, you know, just so people aren't being pushed out, you know.
Sure.
Because it's just, to me, it's just a kind of a customer service. And Dave, it's - I don't mean just the grocery store, I mean any project. We have a lot going on, thankfully, and I just feel like I don't want to end up in the same spot where we're - now we're 10 policemen down, or we're overworking Public Works or staff in general. There's got to be an additional amount of work. That's - it was just a -
Yeah, no, and I think it's a fair question, trustee Galante, and it just, when we, obviously, when these projects are developed, the staff, Kimberly regularly has meetings with all the staff. We review at budget time with upcoming developments or if there are needs for staffing, and so it is something that we actively look at, I think is what you're asking, so.
Thanks. Thank you. That was it.
Is that it? Chief, could you just address real quick for Diane? Even if we wanted to, you're limited on how many a police department can hire per year anyways? Just a brief description of how many we can hire because of the academies, just?
Well, the academies are closed right now. Fortunately, we're going to work off a lateral list. We have several people that have expressed interest. It still is a procedure that will take at least three to five months, depending on how the officer's doing, and they don't have to go to the academy, it's bypassed, but it still takes - it's a process. And what we have is officer burnout. If they're constantly training somebody, they request not to train for a little bit, so we can maybe train three people at a time, maximum. Getting back to what Dave had said, that corner was much busier at one time prior to my appointment, so I don't foresee that as a problem because it's going to be a warehouse and a store, but I understand what trustee Galante's saying is, we get more and more warehouses and things, there's going to be obviously more to cover, but a lot of it's just more industrial than commercial.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, it's more than, I'm not just talking about, you know, one warehouse. I'm saying in general, the cost of it, because we talk a lot about the revenue we're going to take in, but there is a cost. Eventually, you know, we are hiring more and more people. At some point, that comes up, and I'm just saying to understand the full cost involved, and not just - it's not in a particular warehouse, or we have, you know, a lot of different activities going on, and yet I haven't yet to hear that we're, you know, we're bringing in a lot of, you know, the apartments and how many people. There's definitely have to be a pull on our resources for that, and just that there is a cost involved. And I understand you can't get them as quick as I'd like to see it all happen, but to understand that there's that need, so you're not, you know, it's already justified because we already know that we're bringing in, you know, how many units, that that's going to - there's going to be a change for that.
It has been addressed, too. We have a couple retirements that we have to fill, which is going to be another problem. However, there were some positions that were frozen that will be freed up soon, which will increase the number that we have. So we are addressing it, just as the mayor said, it does take time. That's the whole issue.
Any other questions from the board?
I'd like to make a statement. Donna, we all, I stand with my fellow board members in thanking you and your staff and everybody that's involved from our village that work on it, but I noticed on the T-shirts, they have a lot of sponsors, you know, and whoever goes out, get those sponsors that helps fund this fun weekend that we had here. And is anything sent to them, a certificate of appreciation or anything to - they can hang in their store, their office or whatever to let them know we recognize them and recognize their help in putting these things on?
Absolutely, trustee Brady. We are very, very grateful for the - for the - all of the participation. That event that we had on Sunday is truly, it takes a village type of project. I mean, it was great thanks to our public safety, of course, our Public Works, all the businesses. Everybody came together, and it was a very great event. Thank you for the accolades. It extends to the entire team, and yes, we are very grateful, and we do thank those businesses many times over.
Yes, whoever got the bands, they were excellent. Just fabulous.
Thanks to Vicky and Sue Paul, they are - Vicky Sanchez and Sue Paul are a hub of the entire operation, so.
And who was in charge of the weather?
Good man.
Yes, they did a great job.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I just want to -
Go ahead.
I just want to add my compliments as well. I had so much fun. I was there from start to finish. I - my friends and I, we had a great time. Thank you to the police department, the fire department, Public Works. I'm always impressed how fast everything is put up and taken down, and you couldn't even tell there was a party on Monday morning, so in the marketing department. Great job with everything. The bands were fun, and I even enjoyed the super slide, so. So it was a great time, and in perfect weather, so, thank you.